All right, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the June 2nd meeting of the Plymouth School Committee. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Ms. Bryant, would you please read our land acknowledgement?
We acknowledge that we are meeting on the unceded, ancestral homeland of indigenous people whose enduring presence we humbly recognize. We honor the Wampanoag people as the original stewards and the Herringhorn Wampanoag as the surviving tribe indigenous to these lands. In our commitment to lifelong learning, we acknowledge historical injustices to the native people of this land and vow to educate ourselves, our community, and our students on the first peoples and the hardships they endured. We offer this as a small but essential step towards building a culture of respect, truth, and accountability.
Thank you, Ms. Bryant. All right, our first order of business tonight is we have a horde of excited students and families outside waiting to get recognized for getting to display their artwork throughout Central Office here at 11 Lincoln Street. So we will be heading outdoors.
Take a little field trip outside and I'm back. You want to say a few words? Want to say something? You want me to say something?
No, you can go off.
Okay. We're ready, Mr. Cable? Hello, everyone. Hey, we've got beautiful weather for this, so thank you for your patience. Really excited to have so many students here tonight. This is an annual tradition, actually, we do it twice a year, to display the amazing artwork that is done throughout this district from the little ones all the way through the high school. And this is my 17th year here, so this is the 34th time that I've witnessed this, and it just gets better and better. And it's just so amazing to see just the amazing work that our students do, led by our inspirational staff that really just do tremendous things with kids each and every day. I just want to take a moment to thank you for supporting the arts. Vigilance and performing arts is extremely important to the school committee, to us as administration, and this is sort of a reflection of that. So we're just really happy to be here to honor your students and recognize them. This will be recorded, if Mr. Cable prior already said that, so it's an opportunity if there are loved ones that won't see it now, they can see it later. So in a moment, Mr. Brizano will be calling your name, our chair of our school committee, handing you a certificate, and we'll shake your hand, okay? So we'll take it one at a time.
All right, thank you, everybody. All right, so first up, we have Cecilia Lonergan.
Applause, applause.
Next up, Martin Zapati from South Elementary School. And if I butcher anybody's name, please correct me. William Zapati from South Elementary School. Congratulations, William. Oh, this is going to be a tough one. Also from South Elementary School, Lucas Flandrionos. All right, also South Elementary, Andrew Jordan. Congratulations, Jordan. All right, Dylan Marguerite. Thanks, buddy. All right, so South Elementary School, Abigail Hall. All right, Lillian Nordahl. All right, so with South Elementary, Leah LaFebra. All right, Aria Thompson, also from South Elementary School. All right, now moving on to Federal Furnace Elementary, Mackenzie Wyman. So with Federal Furnace, Maya Chin. All right. Federal Furnace Elementary, Rowan McLaughlin. All right, so with Federal Furnace, Chloe Borgotti. All right, now moving on to South, Nathaniel Morton Elementary School, Alice Aronholz. All right, so Nathaniel Morton, Reese Hoben. All right. Scarlett Babini, also from Nathaniel Morton. All right, Izzy Qualls from Nathaniel Morton. Good job, Izzy. All right, second with Nathaniel Morton, Mason Moreno. All right, so with Nathaniel Morton, Ty Hamilton. All right. Next up, Abie Cody, also with Nathaniel Morton. All right. Still with Nathaniel Morton, Callie Delaney. All right, so with Nathaniel Morton, Brantley Gudetti. All right, now we're moving on to Hedge Elementary School, Evan Fitzgibbons. All right, and Cold Spring Elementary School, Elizabeth McDonald. All right, so with Cold Spring Elementary School, Thomas Cummings IV. All right, moving on to Manomet Elementary School, Cadence O'Leary. Congratulations. All right, so with Manomet Elementary, Ella Parsons. Oh. You lost? All right. All right, we have Skylah Packard with Manomet Elementary. Go that way, go that way. All right, still with Manomet Elementary, Taya Vandepoot. Did I get that right? Oh, Taya, sorry, Taya. All right, also with Manomet Elementary, Reese Trout. Next up is Declan McClay from Manomet Elementary. All right, now we're moving on to Indian Brook Elementary School, Cameron McCombs. All right, still with Indian Brook, Cora Peronich. All right, next up is Stella Geronda from Indian Brook. All right, so with Indian Brook Elementary School, Olivia Bowman. All right, also with Indian Brook, Jod Boonjahid. Did I get that right? Congratulations. All right, still at Indian Brook, Maeve Lynch. All right. Next up is Kendley McGinnis, also from Indian Brook. All right, good job. All right, next up is Tessa Jones. All right, still with Indian Brook, we have Milo Gunnin. All right, moving on to West Elementary School, Mila Richards. Or Mila, Mila? Mila, Mila. All right, Beverly Ellenberger from West. All right, so with West Elementary School, Ivy Kuzkowski. All right, next up, moving on to Plymouth South Middle School, Ally O'Connor. All right, so with Plymouth South Middle, Dahlia Reynolds. All right, next up from Plymouth South Middle, Emily Scarath. All right, and also from Plymouth South, Scarlett O'Neill. All right, and next up, Ava Lane, also from Plymouth South Middle. And then Riley Allen. All right, second with Plymouth South Middle, next up we have Julia Bossi. Bossi. All right, Plymouth South Middle, Colby Watt. All right, so with Plymouth South Middle, Mateus Malios. Got it? Got it? All right, thanks. Yes. All right, next up, Nick Sterrett from Plymouth South Middle. All right, now moving on to PCIS, we have Cheyenne Dusette Baker. Congratulations. All right, still with PCIS, Mackenzie Sanderson. All right, next up with PCIS, we have Sarah Borgazani. All right, and next up from Plymouth PCIS as well, John Lyndon. Lyndon? All right, moving on to the high schools. First up from Plymouth North, Shay Donnelly. And also from Plymouth North, Caleb LeBlanc. All right, second with Plymouth North, Aaron Johnson. All right, and now moving on to Plymouth South High School, first up is Miley Sylvia. All right, and then back to Plymouth North, Cadence Loose. Lucy? And then back to Plymouth South High School, Sophia Michael. And Plymouth South, Mia Bello Monroe. And then from Plymouth South, Ethemia Malios. Am I close? From Plymouth South, Lane Laloche. And then coming back to Nathaniel Morton Elementary School, Will Hubsch. And also from Nathaniel Morton, Sophia Fernandez. And then also from Nathaniel Morton, Mary Jane Fernandez. All right, and moving over to South Elementary School, Nova Velano. And from Plymouth North, Sophia Zupi. I like the shirt. And last but not least, from Cold Spring Elementary School, Olivia Reed. All right, looks like that's it. Well, thank you, everybody, for coming out. Thankful we had beautiful weather today, so thank you. Congratulations to all your kids.
Wonderful night and a wonderful summer. Happy and safe summer with your families. Thank you.
We will go ahead and move in. Next up would be comments from the community members, and we have no one here today, so we will keep moving on to our next order of business. First, next up, we have our high school representative update. So first up from Plymouth North High School, we have Anna King.
Good evening, everyone. So this week at Plymouth North, we will be celebrating over 300 graduate students on Saturday. We are looking forward to celebrating our senior class and all of their accomplishments. Meet the Coaches Night for Fall Sports will be held tomorrow, June 3rd at 6:00 PM. Students interested in participating in Fall Sports at Plymouth North should attend with a parent or guardian. Information and more season logistics will be discussed throughout the meetings. Congratulations to all of the spring athletic teams for making it into the MIAA tournament this season. Congratulations to our unified track and field athletes. Many were able to qualify and compete in the state meet last week at Natick High School. The Biology MCAS will be held this week for our ninth graders at Plymouth North. The last day that the cafeteria will be offering hot breakfast is Friday, June 13th, and lunch will be Thursday, June 12th. We want to extend a huge thank you to our cafeteria staff for providing our school community with meals daily every day for the last year. The last day for our late buses is Thursday, June 5th. Late buses will no longer be available after that date, so please plan accordingly. This past Friday, Plymouth North Junior Prom was held at Lake Pearl, and the, sorry, the theme was Tangled and Starry Night themed with lots of beautiful lanterns as centerpieces. Over 270 Plymouth North students, guests and staff were in attendance. The prom court was made up of 10 nominated juniors by staff and students. Congratulations to all the juniors on the court. Class advisors, Jen McWhorter and Amy Goldberg, recognized junior class 2026 officers, delegates and members of the prom committee. Thank you to the several students that have dedicated months and extra hours of their time to plan an amazing night. A fun time was had by all. This past Friday, we honored our senior class at our class day ceremony. The whole school gathered to celebrate the seniors' last day of school. So many seniors were recognized and awarded for different things across their four years at Plymouth North. Our first PNHS drone team had a great season, qualifying for the 2024-2025 championship race held in Houston, Texas. They placed 10th overall for the country for head-to-head racing and 9th overall for Team Capture the Flag. They missed qualifying for the finals by .44 seconds in Capture the Flag and by 3.67 seconds in head-to-head racing. The team did great overall. Tomorrow, June 3rd, the Senior Dinner Dance will take place at Indian Pond Country Club. This will be a fun night filled with celebration as it is our seniors' last class event before graduation. Thursday, June 5th will be our convocation night for seniors that are being recognized. And Saturday will be our graduation ceremony for graduating seniors. Wednesday, June 11th and Thursday, June 12th are the first and full-day exams for first and second half of the day. I'm sorry, first and second period of those days. Friday, June 13th and Monday, June 16th are both half-days and exam periods only. And Tuesday, June 17th will be the last day of school and a half-day as well for any students who need to make up exams. Thank you.
Thank you, Anna. And next up from Plymouth South, we have Lily Morse.
Hello, everyone. This is a busy time for the seniors, and we had a great class day on Friday where we celebrated the entire class. We begin graduation rehearsals tomorrow. Scholarship night is Wednesday and Senior Dinner Dance is Thursday. Graduation being Saturday at 1:00 PM. We also have our elementary walks this week, which we are looking forward to. At the end of class day, PSHS awarded senior Liam McGilvery and his family with the first-ever Legacy Award. Liam is the final of 12 McGilvery children to graduate from PSHS. The oldest, Kyle, graduated in 2003. A number of the McGilvery alum were able to attend when we surprised Liam and his parents. Grade 9 students will take the Biology MCAS on Wednesday and Thursday, June 4th and 5th. Students should report directly to their testing rooms upon arrival to South. Final exams for underclassmen begin on Wednesday, June 11th, and Underclassmen Award Night is June 12th. Congratulations to Zoe Woja, who was honored with her family recently. Zoe signed her National Letter of Intent to further her track and field career at Assumption University. Congratulations to all the spring tourney teams at South, Boys and Girls Tennis, Baseball, Softball and Boys Lacrosse. Three events are happening today: Baseball away at Westwood High School, Softball home and Boys Lacrosse home. Congratulations to the following members of the Boys and Girls Track Teams for their outstanding performances this weekend at Westfield State at the Division III State Championships. The Boys 4x800 meter relay team of Noah Brilliant, CJ Fox, Matt Gregory and Anthony Lyons placed 2nd in the state. The highlights of the meet were in the 400-meter hurdles and Alexa Laznicki winning her first state title and Lilia Davies winning not one but two state titles in the shot put and discus. And lastly, thank you to Mrs. White and her students from PSMs, who honored our seniors who are entering the military with a thoughtful gift in small ceremony at PSHS. Thank you.
Definitely a lot going on. Do we have any questions for either representative? All right, well, we have one of, I know this is Lily's last meeting as she will be graduating on Saturday. Unfortunately, Quinn had to come to the last meeting, so he's not able to be here from North. But we wish you both very well and thank you for representing your classes so well throughout the year.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Lily. All right, next up, we have two program updates for tonight's meeting. First up from the Plymouth Early Childhood Center is Ms. Denise Tobin.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Denise Tobin, the principal of the Plymouth Early Childhood Center. Thank you for having me here tonight. So the first slide looks back over the past few years about our growth. We've been talking a lot about the growth of the Plymouth Early Childhood Center and the preschool as a whole. So you can see from 2020 to where we are now, and these numbers were on April 30th. Currently, as of today, we are at 292 students and 197 active IEPs that we're servicing at the Plymouth Early Childhood Center right now. With that, too, I don't know if you can see in the small, we have 7.6% of our students are multi-language learners with those numbers. So the way, for those of you that don't know, the way the preschool works, the integrated preschool classrooms, we aren't allowed any more than 15 students in a classroom. Seven of them can be students on IEPs and eight of them are students from the community who come and support our special ed students. Over the past few years, to deal with our growth, we've added four new teachers. This has created 34 additional IEP spots and 40 peer spots. And you could see the total number of special ed slots that we have available. We have 133 in our integrated classrooms, 27 substantially separate, for a total of 160 special ed spots. And then for our peers, we can handle 152 peer spots. So we get our referrals in many different ways. They come from early intervention. We get parent referrals, teacher referrals, the grant and Head Start, which I will talk a little bit more about in detail throughout this presentation. And then as of 4/8, we had done 178 special ed evaluations, and we've had 131 initial team meetings. So I want to just kind of recognize my staff at this point that the number of evaluations that they have done this year is significant, and they've done a really good job trying to maintain, get everything in on time so we can meet the timelines for compliance. But it's been very, very challenging for them, and they're all very stressed out at this point, so I want to recognize them. And when you break that down, the teachers collectively have done 102 evaluations. Our speech therapists have done 132 evaluations, OT 49, PT 36. And over at Head Start, they've done 30 evaluations this year over at Head Start. So again, that's significant. Our team, so we have 13 teachers, 12 of them are located at PEC, and we have one teacher at Manomet this year. Again, to deal with our space issues and our growing issues, we were able to open one classroom at Manomet, and she has a morning session and an afternoon session over there. We have 24 paraprofessionals, and they arrange from 18 to 27 hours a week supporting our students. And this year, we were fortunate enough to increase four of those 18-hour paras to 24-hour paras. God bless you. So again, my hope is over the course of the next few years that we are able to continue to increase those 18-hour paras to 24 hours, just for the consistency of our students. For related service providers, we have four speech therapists and a speech assistant who we share with PCIS. We have an OT and a Coda. We have a PT and a PTA who we share with South Elementary. We have a full-time RBT, and then we have a BCBA two and a half days a week. We share that BCBA with PCIS and Manomet. And then our grant team, which again, I'll talk more in detail about. Our grant team is a special ed teacher, an OT, a speech therapist and a part-time BCBA, supporting the students in the community. And then this year, we're very fortunate. I don't know how I would do it without her. We have a special ed department head full-time, so last year she was part-time. This year, she's full-time. So she does all the transitions from early intervention now, and her and I share all of the IEP meetings. So we offer a continuum of services at the preschool. We have some students that just come in for services. If they don't want to attend the program, they can just come in for OT or speech services. Our integrated preschool model, we have two, three and four-day sessions, which gives us a total of 17 sessions that we're able to offer. With our substantially separate and our hybrid models, we have three substantially separate classrooms. We had to increase that last year due to the level of need of our students. And then a hybrid model, which is integrated in the morning, and then the special ed students stay for the full day, and they're in a substantially separate program in the afternoon. We have two classrooms of that model. And then we have our grant and Head Start. So the focus of the grant and the Head Start is to provide support out into the community for our students. And if it weren't for these two things, we'd have a lot more students in our programs and we wouldn't have space for them. So one of them being this Community Preschool Partnership Initiative, again, which I will definitely get into more detail about on the next slide, and then Head Start. So Head Start is something that we've done for a long time, and one of our special ed teachers goes to Head, with Anna, speech therapist, they go to Head Start two mornings a week, and they do evaluations and they provide direct services so that students can stay in Head Start for their five full-day programs, which we don't offer. So CPPI. CPPI, as I said, is the Community Preschool Partnership Initiative. Over the past two years, we have been awarded $494,000 to do this grant. I know it sounds like a lot of money, but when you break it down, $325,000 of that goes to salary and $87,000 of that goes to fringe benefits and mileage and other expenses for our staff just to go and provide those services, which doesn't leave us with a whole lot to do, a lot of the other things that we'd like to do. The idea of the grant is to provide high-quality, full-day daycare to preschools, and we provide special ed services out in the community as well as part of this grant. They are currently, this grant is currently servicing 18 students. So again, if we were to bring back all of those 18 students, we would need two and a half classrooms to do that. They do community screenings, they do all the evaluations out in the community. They provide RTI, and then they collaborate with the preschool teachers out in the community to build capacity with those teachers and so that the teachers are able to learn from them and be able to carry over some of those accommodations and modifications that are listed in their IEP. So we've been busy with a lot of professional development. We've been working on some curriculum development. Three teachers worked in the South Shore area in a consortium, building some inquiry-based curriculum units. We are working on the pyramid model now to address social and emotional development and intervention. And the teachers right now, and will carry over into next year, are doing a 30-hour training through modules to learn different strategies throughout the different tiers of the pyramid model. As a result of some of our learning walks, we noticed that we do have a little bit of a gap in our literacy. So we have two teachers right now piloting Hegarty, which is a phonemic awareness program. And they're going to come back and talk about it and see if that's a direction we want to go. And when I met with Dr. White, it aligns with what they're doing in kindergarten and the early grades, so hopefully that will help. And then another thing is the transition. So from preschool to kindergarten, that's a really big transition. And we wanted to make that better, and it really had to start with our own growth. So last year, we started, all of our teachers went and got to see kindergarten, a real kindergarten classroom in action during the school day, just to kind of see what happens in kindergarten, because we're kind of stuck in our own little preschool world. And it was important for us to know what the expectations are, so we're making appropriate recommendations for our students. This year, our substantially separate teachers got to go and visit the substantially separate programs across the district as well, so they were able to kind of, again, understand what the expectations were when we're making those recommendations for kindergarten. We still have a lot more work to do, but we're, especially when it comes to transitions with parents, you know, we really want to improve that part of our program. And then at the end of every year, which we just finished up on Friday, we have virtual meetings. My special ed teachers meet with every elementary special ed staff, and they talk about the students and what their specific needs are so that they're ready for them, which helps again with that smooth transition. So the Manomet satellite, the teacher there has done a phenomenal job kind of being over there by herself, but reaching out to us and us reaching out to her, making sure she has all the supports that she needs. There's a waitlist for Manomet for next year for community peers, and we do have a waitlist for PEC as well. We have a pretty large waitlist right now for community peers. She has some 5th grade helpers that help her at the end of the day, and she's really become a welcomed addition, or that classroom has become a really welcomed addition as a whole to Manomet. So we're very fortunate and thankful for them for accepting our preschool classroom over there. So we've offered several parent trainings this year. We've done a Behavior 101. We've done a picky eaters, a toilet training and a supporting self-regulation, all for parents to come and learn from our staff. And then as part of the grants, we did a community provider training series. So we invited every single provider from the town, whether they have a home daycare or a community daycare. Head Start, everyone was invited to come. We did one again on Behavior 101 and then a self-regulation in the preschool classroom. And both of those staff members, so Jamie McAffery is a teacher at PEC and Darlene Bancroft is the OT on the grant team. So we're really utilizing the strengths of our own staff to provide a lot of these trainings. So this year, our One Book One School was maybe something beautiful, and it had a lot to do with just art and painting and music and movement, and it was just a great night. And with the level of need of our students right now, we have many students who have augmentative communication devices. And this year, the speech therapist did a center, and they had a lot of augmentative devices out so families and students can all come in and practice using those devices just so they're aware of what their peers are using in the classroom. So that was a great addition to our One Book One School. So it definitely takes a village to run a preschool. And we are fortunate enough right now to be part of the PCIS Village, and they have done so much for us. We were able to be part of the Yellow Tulip Project this year. Nurse Judy picked some of her middle school helpers to come and every, we chose one student from every classroom to go and plant the bulbs, and they looked beautiful when they bloomed this spring. There's a babysitter's club that one of the nurses runs after school, and the preschool pals is what we call them. They come over and they work with the students in the classroom. They helped us with our PTA movie night, doing crafts and things like that, so we're very fortunate to have them. Every year, we have the holiday concert with the band, the chorus and the orchestra, and that's a wonderful event that we look forward to every year. Mr. Siri does some science activities. We utilize the planetarium. We've had some allied health interns every year, and they work with our PT and OT, and they have been a tremendous asset to our school. And I know you can see over there with our custodian in training. So as part of, as part of his, part of his behavior plan is he can earn to go and work with the custodians. And they made a bucket for him that doesn't move. They cut down the broom and the mop, and he's one of the best custodians at PCIS. So he does a great job, and they always say what a great job he does. He's so cute. And then PCIS puts up with a lot from us. We do parades through their hallways. So the picture there, one of the classrooms, Christine Blanchard's classroom, they were learning about, during Thanksgiving, they were learning about the Macy's Day Parade and balloons. So they made their own animal balloons, and then they did a parade through PCIS. And then this year, I forgot to put it up there, but this year, we had an intern from Rising Tide. She was a senior going into early childhood education, so she came for half the year and worked in one of our classrooms as well. So our PTA, I think I say every year, they're small but they're mighty. They do so much for us with fundraisers, enrichment, a family movie night and supporting the teachers. And then some people from the community that helped us so that we could provide t-shirts for everyone for our field day. They're up there, too, so I'd like to thank all of them. And then the best part of our school are just the kids. It's why we're here, why we do it. You could see one of the fun activities is shaving cream ice skating that occurs every winter. And it's loved by some and hated by some. And just some various activities and friendships being built.
Do we have questions from anybody? Ms. Haywood?
Hello. Thank you very much for your comprehensive presentation. You mentioned something about challenges. You talked about the evaluations, 178. In a perfect world, what would you need?
In a perfect world? I would like an evaluation team so that my staff could focus on servicing students. That would be amazing.
And just one more question, just in terms of, you were talking about the transition from the preschool to the kindergarten. What were the barriers that you noted and what is it that you're incorporating in order to make this a little bit more seamless?
So I feel like when we sat down and talked about the level of service that a child needs and what to put in their IEPs for special ed services or OT services, we really had to kind of go back to what are the expectations when they enter kindergarten. There are kids coming that don't have any preschool experience, and then our students are coming with preschool experience. Do they need the level of support that we were recommending? Do they need more or less? And I felt like, as a team, we kind of lost touch of what happens in an elementary school. So we just really wanted to make sure that we were making the right recommendations for services.
Thank you.
Other questions?
I don't have any questions, just a statement. I really love that you brought in the augmentative stuff so that the other peers could experience that, because I feel like when it comes to your integration model and how much you do with that, like that's just another level of adding to really have people start to understand and connect.
Yeah, I have some amazing speech therapists, and they worked really hard on kind of creating an activity where kids had to use the device to request items so that they could do our project. It was really neat.
That's really cool.
All right, is there anybody else? All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. All right, next up, we have an update on our Student Services Department. So we have Sean Helfman and Ben Genowitz.
Good evening, everyone. It's good to be here, good to see you all. And just take a moment to welcome the new committee members and congratulations, and glad that you're on board. I just have to say, confess, I guess, that I feel bad because I dragged Mr. Genowitz out tonight, and he informed me that his son hit two home runs at his baseball game, and I feel responsible in missing that.
I should miss more of them.
But in all honesty, I really wanted Ben to come out tonight with me. I've always felt that, you know, over the years in the Student Services Department, I've got some really talented, smart people that do a bulk of the work, and Ben is definitely one of them. So we have a plan tonight. I'm going to speak for about 10 minutes, I think, and Ben's going to probably do about five. The presentation that you have, it seems big, but I've actually cut five or six slides out of it from last year's, and I may kind of cruise through some of them relatively quickly, but the information is there for you to look at, and I'll just get started right now. So the Student Services Department, these are the different areas that we cover, and let's just kind of take a peek at that now. I generally go through the attendance more in the middle of the presentation, but I'm going to let Ben do that towards the end tonight. School counseling, we've kind of held true to the whole idea of paying attention to the three main domains of school counseling. And our standards follow the American School Counselor standards, the Massachusetts School Counselor standards, and as well as the DESI idea of what school counselors should be doing. The curriculum that we developed is a 6th through 12th curriculum, and it is student-centered with activities that are going to help them think about ideas for the future, a roadmap to what they want to do when they get older, post-secondary options. All of these activities lead up to that. We try to make sure that the counselors get to know their kids, get to know their students, develop relationships with them, and believe that that's an integral part of any effective school counseling program. We also try to involve the parents, and this is just a slide, I know you can't see it, but we have parent programs that will address post-secondary planning for the most part, financial aid, helping their students plan for their future. The staffing in our schools, I think over the years, has been an area that we focused on with the increase in needs that we've seen in our community for school counseling. So this slide just tells you the positions in the schools associated with them. You know, the next slide is a little more indicative of kind of what our support staff staff is looking at in terms of students. So I started this slide last year and it tells you the ratio from student to counselor. It includes general ed school counselors, school psychologists and adjustment counselors. So this does not include program special ed counselors. And I think we're in like a decent place with that. This slide is new and it goes over more historically what we've seen in student enrollment, kind of coinciding with what we've tried to do, an increase in counseling staff. So I do feel good about that. I think, you know, you hear other presentations during the school year from the schools and I understand the need for, for school counseling support. I also think that we've paid attention to it and we will continue to do that. And this, this slide, you know, shows the numbers behind that. We've also paid attention to the community resources that are out there and we have had partnerships with local community resources, Gosnold, High Point. These are the numbers behind that. They work with our students. It's, it is challenging to do that for a number of different reasons. You know, the most effective school partnerships are ones where you're able to work together with, with, with different organizations. And we've tried to do that. We will continue to work on this the best we can. I'm just stating that there have been some challenges with this and moving forward, we will continue to try to provide the service to the best of our ability. Yeah, that's really all I wanted to say about that. So we also have a group that we work with, that we've been working with for years now, Care Solace, and it provides mental health referrals for students, families or staff members. We have good usage. It's, it's a good service. Counselors can track the students and whether they're being hooked up with these services or not. There's also a free state mental health resource line now as well. I do think that this, this service has been well received by our staff and we'll try our best to continue using Care Solace in the future. We've, we've done some good professional development with the school councils. I want to thank Ben for some of the work he's done as well around the attendance, working with our school counselors. These are just some of the other topics that we've, we've worked on this year. Shifting gears a little bit to McKinney-Vento, the Homeless Education Act, I'm not going to read through this slide. I keep it up there though because it does describe the law and what we have to kind of follow to make sure that we're giving the students the right services who are homeless in our community. And the same with the foster care law. This is the slide that describes the law. This next slide actually discusses the differences between the two and really they're trying to remove barriers for students. The strike through there is the big change that's, that's coming up this year. Foster care will be similar now to McKinney-Vento in that students who complete a grade in a certain school when they move on will still be considered in our district potentially. They can stay in our district where in the past they would have to move on to the next school. It's going to, it's going to make some changes for us. We've already kind of dealing with that a little bit. We saw this coming down the pike, but DESI has not changed their regulations around it yet, so we are, we are dealing with that ourselves. I would imagine that we would have some, you know, updates on that hopefully by the start of the school year. If not, it's just something for you all to be aware of. And the numbers behind the transportation costs, this is what it looks like now and goes back a few years. Obviously, it's, we do spend a fair amount of money on transporting students who are either McKinney-Vento or foster care. The projected numbers for this year probably run around right now about 460 or 470 total, in case you're interested in that. And we've been trying to do a better job of tracking that. Excuse me. What do we have next? Oh, so I'm just going to move right into English learners and I've, I've given you this slide so that you can just see the difference between what we now, sometimes you hear like MLL, multilingual learner, or you'll hear English learner. I, I use them both, but the technical difference between the two is that the English learner is the student who has been screened and, and really requires a direct ESL type of service, whether through an ESL teacher, a classroom teacher, a combination of both. Multilingual learners is more of an asset-based approach to discussing our students who have, you know, the ability to speak more than one language, which I think is great. This slide shows you the history statistically of our number of English learners and you can see the growth, particularly over the last, you know, four or five years, steady, steady growth. And the, the profile of our English learners and digging a little deeper into those numbers, looking at the, the languages that our students speak, obviously Portuguese is still our number one language, but we've definitely grown in other languages as well over the last few years and you can see some of those. And then I think this slide and the next slide, some of the data around the work that we need to do for English learners, we're tracking growth in, in the four domains and we know that that's an area that we need to continue to work on. This, this slide shows that and this, this one does as well. You know, and it puts us, the 2024 access scores a little below the state. We have just gotten the 2025 scores and we will be analyzing them in the next couple of weeks. Moving into the next piece on this, we, we had the, the TFM audit recently and I went to a conference about a week ago. It was the MatSal conference and there was one presenter who, who described that her first day on the job as a new English language coordinator at a school district, she was given a report, the TFM report, and the school district had, had not passed 11 out of the 12 categories. I felt better for a moment when I heard that. We did, we did do a good job on 10 out of the 12 categories. These two in red are the two that we are working on and we were placed on, you know, corrective action for these. So we've been, we've been doing our progress monitoring through the course of this year. Quarterly updates that we've worked with the staff on, these are the two areas really. It's, it's, it's ELE 5 and ELA 14. The first one is developing curriculum and ESL curriculum and the second one has to do with the SEI endorsement of our, of our teachers. And I just included the last, this is the last quarterly update that we will be working on this month and I'll submit by the end of June, some of the things that we, we have to do. And we've been working really hard on this, this ESL curriculum piece as well as the licensing requirements that our teachers, you know, need, need to have for this endorsement. And just by way of summary with, with the English learner department, we've definitely had an increase in numbers, but we've, I think, addressed it as best we can through staffing. It's an area that we're constantly looking at and the hardest part, I think, are schools that have a small number of English learners and trying to staff that appropriately and decide where people are going to, going to be. Another challenge now is also finding qualified certified ESL teachers. And, you know, that branches out into other departments, but certainly for English learnings, it's, it's something that we're struggling with, but we're doing our best to try to find those people. Some of the other things that we're doing within the department, as you can see on the slide. So also the professional development that we've done this year, a lot of work with our ESL teachers in a lot of different areas. And we've, we've worked hard to, to support them and the teachers have worked hard to identify the benchmarks that the kids need. And I think this is, be something that we will be continually working on in the next year, two, three, as we move down the line. Shifting gears a bit, this slide just describes our tutoring, home tutoring for students who, who, you know, have extended absences or are out. Most of the students that we have of the 87 are from the high school level. The next, the next group would be the middle school and then obviously a smaller proportion of the elementary. Most of these students are being tutored for medical or mental health reasons and a small percentage, 9% because of discipline. Home ed plans, as you know, the policy was revised a bit prior to the school year. It's actually made it a little bit, I suppose, easier for parents. There's, there's less hoops to jump through. It's very similar to the, to the policy that was prior though. And this year's homeschool plans, we have about, what, 162? That's the breakdown by elementary, middle and high. And this slide shows you the historical numbers and the bump was in, was around COVID, the 225 that you see there. We've been hovering in the 160s now. So, you know, prior to that, it was, it was usually around 100. So we're kind of bridging the gap now with that. So some folks have stayed and decided to do homeschooling. I kept this slide up and I probably will. I just am so happy and proud of what the schools do with the advanced placement numbers and you can even see the 2024 numbers have kind of bounced right up again. Lots of kids taking advanced courses and generally doing pretty well on, on those exams. So, you know, it says a lot about, I think, the work that's been done like years prior to this, to establish that type of program in our district. And the teachers and the administrators really work hard on that. Just a few final things here that I'd like to touch on. The NAN project is something that we're doing in the middle school and, and, you know, we had prevention there for a while. This, this is for the seventh graders and it gives them a little, a taste of, of, of mental health and what people who have struggled with that can do and the kind of resources that are out there to help them. Also, I will bring up quickly this, this, the Bright program. We have a small grant that has allowed the Bright Transition Program to be at two of our schools. If there's an area that I think might be an area of growth for us, I would, I would love to see that program at, at all four of our secondary schools. We are looking at creative ways to try to do that. It's always, it's a budget issue because it requires personnel, but that's a great program that helps those students who are out for extended periods of time. Perhaps they've been in the hospital. We can come in and give them some more dedicated support beyond just, you know, our, our general school counseling department. So that's, that's something that I would definitely recommend and look into and we're working at that. And I wanted to put some information up on the local scholarships because I'm just amazed at the amount of money that our community actually gives to these, to the kids. It's, it's amazing. And this is what it looks like the last few years, you know? So that, that's a, that's a pretty significant amount of money and, and I'm just grateful to the community for what they do. And the last thing I'd say is I usually like to try to recognize some people. And Cindy Scanlon is, is a guidance secretary at North High School. She's retiring this year. She's a registrar, she's worked hard, she's, she's done a lot of great work over the years. She was the scholarship secretary for a while too. And I just wanted to recognize Cindy and congratulate her. I know, you know, she's finishing up and before you know it, like June will be over. So I wanted to thank her for that. I think, yeah, so that's my presentation. I'm not sure how long it took, maybe 10, 12 minutes, hopefully. I'm going to hand it off to Mr. Genowitz and let him take it from here.
First of all, let me say thank you for having me and congratulations to the newly elected members. First, I want to thank Dr. Halpin, who's been a tremendous support to me in this role. Prior to being the supervisor of attendance, I was one of the assistant principals at Plymouth North High School. So it's, it's been a transition over, you know, I'm now in my fifth year doing this role, but it's nice to work with children and staff at each level because I was sort of formally trained as a, as a high school teacher and then in a, in a high school assistant principal. So it's nice to get to work with, with kids and families from all over the district. I guess I should start where, where our, our branding or our messaging started. Last year, Dr. Campbell was able to secure a grant and we were able to do some work around messaging when it came to attendance. So we sat down with the geniuses at, at TV who are a lot better at this kind of thing. I'm pretty good with Canva, but they're, they're professionals. They were able to come up with some messaging that we kind of softly rolled out at the end of, of last school year and then really kicked into, into high gear at the beginning of this school year. So I want to start with how we make data-driven decisions when we look at attendance. We have a lot of robust tools that we can use here in Plymouth. Open Architects is one of them. This is, this is one of the dashboards that, you know, all the administrators have access to and obviously I use this one, this is the one that I, I look at almost on a daily basis. And we use these tools to collect and analyze the data so that we can make good decisions about where to target our efforts, where to focus our efforts. For example, this information tells us that we are in line with some national trends. For instance, kindergarten in ninth grade being particularly high areas of, of chronic absenteeism. That's a national trend. We are, you know, there are other areas that we can look at to sort of say, okay, this is maybe unique to Plymouth. This year, we had a little bit of a bump in fourth grade, so we need to sort of look at maybe targeting some of those areas for other interventions in messaging. But we can take this information and use it to, to promote district initiatives. We can disaggregate this data by subgroups, whether, you know, any subgroups that you can think of, whether we're talking about EL students, high needs, race, gender, by school, and even do it by excused and unexcused absences. So just to give you an idea, if you're looking at the, just the flat attendance rate, which has gone up year over year over the last three and four years, if you look at that, our attendance rate is some, you know, fluctuates between 92 and 97% from the beginning to the end of the school year. We had a particularly difficult winter health-wise. I know that, you know, I gave a presentation here once and my kids had not been to school that week because they had four different things, you know, they were dealing with pneumonia, flu A, flu B. So it really was difficult in about a three-month period from December to early March. And then we saw, as you can see there, it's kind of the reverse bell curve. That's a pretty typical trend for our school years, but this, you can see there that this year, because of those sicknesses, we did have, you know, that, that attendance rate dipped a little bit further than it normally does. But if you account for excused absences, then our attendance rate is roughly 95, 96%, which is, I, I, again, attribute that to the tremendous work that the folks in the schools do to message and to try to help support our kids. I think our kids by and large feel very supported in schools. Yeah, and like I said, year over year, our attendance rate is improving. So to take a look at a few of those initiatives, and this is the people side of things. Our Be Present campaign started in early earnest at the beginning of this year with some strong messaging. We rolled out in the K and, and first grade areas. The reason we did that is because we thought, what better way to message than to start with the folks that are really coming into our district for the first time? And we hope to continue this, you know, every year, but we think, we think that starting at that age group was the appropriate step. So we did, we were able to secure some apparel with the Be Present logo on it and, and, and give that to all staff at the K1 grade levels who were interacting with students. We thought that that was important for it to be from the nurses to peer professionals to teachers so that there was a consistent message across the district. Again, some of the other things that we've done is we've worked to create a consistent five-day attendance letter. By law, schools must reach out to students who have five unexcused absences or more in an effort to try to do some planning about how to help support them to be more consistently in school. That was a tremendous, eight elementary schools, two middle schools, you know, we were able to get them, you know, kind of on the same page and working to have some, you know, some consistency there. Ed TV developed four videos. I hope you've seen them. I can share those links after this meeting too, where we really tried to, we tried to make it personal. And what we did is we selected different age groups, staff and students to target. So we made, our Ed TV was able to make four videos this year. One at Federal Furnace with, in a first grade classroom, one at Hedge Elementary where if you, if you haven't gotten a chance to see that one, there's a couple really budding stars over there who were really great on camera, fantastic kids. The third one, which we released in the winter, was all about supporting students with physical and mental health needs. And that featured the adjustment counselor, the nurse and several students at PCIS. And the final one, which was just released a couple of weeks ago, was focused on Harbor Academy downstairs here, Mr. Demers and the, and the kids who have worked really, really hard and maybe didn't have a traditional path towards graduation, but will be walking across that stage in the, this weekend. And, and the reason we did that is we wanted to make some, some messaging that both parents and students could connect to about the importance of, of being in school every day, whether it's your favorite thing in the world to do to come to school or not your favorite thing to do, to come to school every day. But the Ed TV, a huge shout out to them because they've been integral in the work that we've done. We've attended monthly truancy summit that DeeDee Winterson over at Algonquin has spearheaded. DeeDee's fantastic. She's another community partner that we rely on and that has, it's culminated, she's culminated this year with a, a campaign to get more kids in school where she's able to have a community fair and reward the kids who, you know, who self-elected to take, take part in that initiative. And we did see actually the, the chronic absenteeism rates, particularly at Algonquin, go down. So it, you know, it's a kudos to, to everybody who was part of that. Lots of community partners again attended that, but the schools were well represented as well. Let's see. Finally, using talking points, that's another tool that we've integrated into the schools. into the schools. I, I can't say enough how, I, I'm not a person who thinks that, you know, one piece of technology is going to change everything, but Talking Points has really been a tool that has allowed me personally, and I think that for the folks that I've been able to sort of convince to, to, to use it and to train them on, it is a way to communicate with our EL population that is efficient and effective. I'm trying really hard to learn some, some different languages. My son is much better at Duolingo and has a better score than I do, but Talking Points bridges that gap in a really non-threatening way. And I think it's been really tremendously helpful in the work that I do and I can't recommend it enough. And that's, you know, I have no, no affiliation. I just, I think it's been, it's, it's, it's really, really effective. So yeah, I think moving on, I've already talked too much, so I'll try to speed through this one. In some cases, in, in, in really chronic, significant cases, we have to file what's called a CRA with the local courts and that's, that stands for a child requiring assistance. That changed from years ago. It was known as a chins. It was a little more punitive when it was known as that. It really truly is a supportive measure, even though we're talking about working with probation officers. My work and my time with probation and getting to know the system that they have and the supports that they're able to provide for families and students, it can seem like it's a punitive step, but it really is supportive. They're able to get services in place for families faster and more efficiently than we might otherwise be able to help with. I will also, you know, give a shout out to the Plymouth Family Resource Center, who is also integral in helping families get the services they need quickly. They do a lot of work, you know, pre-CRA services with families, but they also do a lot of work with our families and the community to help them with housing. If, if anybody is food insecure, they really do a great job and, and the connection is just growing and getting bigger between the schools and the Family Resource Center. So I'd be remiss if I didn't, you know, talk about them a little bit. And of the 17 students who were at one point on a CRA this year, only fif, only two of them remain. Fifteen of them were able to, you know, meet the goals that are set forth in those plans that are created and, you know, in collaboration with Juvenile Probation or the Plymouth Family Resource Center, or sometimes with the Department of Child, Children and Families. Most cases are dismissed and expunged because the student, the students meet their goals. And those are, they deleted, there's no record that they ever had. It is not a criminal complaint. It is not something that follows them along. Once they, once they solve the issue, it is, it, it's gone from the record. So we've been able to have a lot of effective relationships there as well. At that point, is it okay? Can I leave you? I have the last stack of our Be Present stickers.
Thank you.
Take them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And it gives me to beg for more.
So I just want to say, thank, thank you to Ben tonight for coming in and, and sharing what, what he's been doing. And I, and then that's why I, I wanted him here tonight. And, and he said he spends a real lot of time on the baseball field, so I don't feel as bad as I said I did. But, but really, you know, the work you do, I appreciate and, and he's very active in all the schools and in the community. So thank you for sharing your, your work. Do any questions from, from anyone tonight?
Yeah, I'll, I'll just, as, obviously as a, you know, as a district, as a key strategic objective for the district, very much appreciate everything you just presented on. It is, you know, hugely vital to, you know, to, to the district meeting its objectives. So I'll hand over for questions. Mr. Morgan had first one?
No, I just want to say thank you for the very informative and concise report. Moved along fast, but very informative. So that's, you know, lessons that some other folks can take as well. Good job.
Thank you.
Ms. Haywood.
Yes, I, I'll piggyback on some of what my colleagues have already mentioned. I just wanted to ask a question, I guess, just in terms of the, the ratios as it relates to counseling staff. I noticed in Indian Brook, South El, Federal Furnace, Nathaniel Morton, just these higher numbers. And so some of them being in the, the low 200s as opposed to the high 100s. And so the, the question is, is there a need more?
So, you know, and, and it's a good question. The answer's a little complex. I, I don't want to get too far off track. I want to answer your question. I think those, those numbers aren't, aren't so bad. It'd be like the, the general way for me to put that, some of the numbers that you see that are, that are lower at the schools are very small. And so, and the other thing that you're not really seeing is, I, I could, I could give you caseload numbers of, say, guidance counselors, you know, the numbers of students that they have. And that number would be higher. Like, I don't know, you know, at the high school it could be like 240, 250 kids, but those high schools have other people in, in, you know, the adjustment counselors, they have school psychologists. So that's why I presented the numbers the way I did, to give you more of an average. I, I, I'm not as concerned about that. I think like if they start creeping up higher than that, we have to have a little discussion about things. I do, I, I do think that, you know, the, the, the mental health needs in a lot of ways have increased. I, I totally understand and I get that. I've, I've been a proponent of, of us in, 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 in the academic realm, doing that work within our lane to help students with their social, emotional issues related to school. And that's why I feel like the partnership that we can have in the community is really helpful because, and, and I also work as a mental health therapist. So like I, I write treatment plans and I, and I work with people and it's, it's just a different, it's, there are similarities between what school counselors do and mental health therapists do, but they're, but they're different. And so I don't know if, and I, I'm going off on a tangent, which I tend to do sometimes, but I'm starting to answer your question because I feel like it is, it's a very good question. I also think, I don't know if I mentioned it during the presentation, but we have special ed programs with, with adjustment counselors in those programs and BCBA's. And I didn't give a slide on that, but those numbers have increased too. So we've really, and we've really tried to meet that need. I think in this area, there's always going to feel like this, you need more. I think that's just the nature of it in some ways. And those, and, and the struggles and the challenges there are very real for people. So, but to answer your question, right now, I don't think we need more. I don't think more personnel would, 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 would fix it. I do think the one area that I see that would help would be that like Bright model, if we could get it at the two other secondary schools that don't have it. I think that would, because those, those people will work with students who are coming back in from, from a placement. They also, when those, when the populations are lower of students with that need, can, can work with, with the general ed students and help the support staff in other areas. And I just think that would alleviate some of these issues that we, we hear. And I, and I, and I hear them too, because I'm, I'm talking to principals, administrators, counselors all the time about this. And I, I don't want to be a person who's like, look, we don't need more. Like that's not the best answer to give people who, but I, I, I try to back it with data and, and, and solid reasoning and I hope that answered your question.
Yeah, it does somewhat, yeah. And then I guess I just wanted to ask a question just regarding the attendance piece.
Sure.
So at first I noticed, I was like, oh, it looks like there are bumps in the transition years, except for middle school, because middle school just seems like it continues to go up. Because I was like, oh, I could see where that makes sense. It transitioned, da-da-da. But then it's ninth grade. What is going on there and what do you perceive is going on there?
So ninth grade is, is, is one of the more difficult transitions because, I mean, kids are going through puberty, kid, there, there's a lot of things that go on. But I think that it's high stakes. There's difference between middle school and high school when it comes to, let's say, credits. You know, when you move to high school, you must get, you must have the grades and attendance to move on to the next grade and that can be very difficult. So for instance, if a student at the high school misses six days where one of their classes falls, like an A day, if they miss six A days, they're going to lose credit in that course. Now there's a credit denial process that, that can take place so that students can earn those back in different ways. But I think there's a, there's a mixture of things that are happening when they get to ninth grade. It's also a predictor, ninth grade is a predictor of, of, of graduation, right? The, the research says the ninth grade, failing two classes in ninth grade can be, you know, i- is the greatest predictor of, of whether or not somebody doesn't graduate, right? So I think that there are a lot of things happening at the same time. It's, 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 it's a lot different and there's a lot more emphasis placed on the student shoulders. The responsibility grows. And I think, you mentioned the word transitions. As a ninth grade assistant principal, back in the day, we, we started to really build a connection with PCIS and PSMs for any of the students who were coming up to the, the freshman academy at North. I think all those transition, all of those, those places where we do transitions, and you heard it when talking about the early childhood, I think it's really important that we continue that and maybe look into ways that we can alleviate some of the stressors, especially for students who traditionally struggle academically.
It's interesting that you, you've pointed that out because it actually answers a question that I had years ago. So when I, I remember when I first ran and I just looked at some of the numbers, which have greatly improved since then, but I remember seeing 10th grade as the year of the highest like dropout, like that's where you saw it. And I was like, why 10th grade? But that makes...
And I'll just add, thanks Ben, that, that I agree. And so the freshman academy model is, is kind of why it's there, part of it, like, but ninth grade is still tough because the kids do have that attendance requirement and it's for the first time. And then you see the 10th grade piece and I, I think he said like, when do kids turn 16? Because then, then you start to see the lock kick in and that's when the, keeping kids in is, is harder. They, they can find ways to, to, to say that I'm not, I'm not successful in school, high school, and, and I'm going to withdraw, I'm going to drop out. They can, and we, we, we're on that as best we can though, because we're, we're trying to keep them in school. I can guarantee that.
No, it's improved greatly. I, I remember the numbers, so yes.
And I can speak to some of the initiatives, you know, like, and it could go anywhere from, you know, students who are tardy and those tardies sometimes then turn into absences. I know in the eighth grade at both middle schools, they've really tried to mimic the high school model for what happens if you are chronically tardy, so that they can get ahead of that coming into, that's one, one more of those pieces about transition that I think, it's, it's a small piece, but it's, you know, attendance is a symptom of, of other things going on, right? So when we're looking at chronic absenteeism, it's, it's an indicator. But I think the more we can do those things to help students transition and prepare them academically, socially, emotionally, you know, little things that we can do, little initiatives can have a huge impact for a lot of the kids. And I, I would echo that I have a lot of students that I work with who have made strides and been able to reengage in school through the Bright program, so, you know.
And then just lastly, in terms of the AP program, there is just, I, I cannot give it enough praise. I just, now knowing students who have been impacted by AP, even a cost savings to their parents, because now these students who, you know, supposedly were in four and five year programs are graduating early. And so, yeah, it's just been such a success.
Well, thanks for saying that. Ever since I've been in education, I've actually like, you know, we, we pay attention to the students who really succeed and, and exceed and school's important to them. AP, you know, does that. We, we pay attention to the students who struggle and try to find programs and, but I, I, I believe in Plymouth, we try to pay attention to the, the kids in between too. And it's, it's just important that we do that. Because every, every student, you know, matters. It's, it sounds cliche, but it's just, it's, it's true. And I, I, I come back around to like the relationships that we build in the schools, the climate and the culture is all really important. And then obviously how the kids do in school, the academics. And we have to pay attention to all that, you know, and I, I appreciate, you know, your comments tonight and, and being supported by the board because it's just really important work that, that we're doing, so thank you.
Ms. Jackson?
Ms. Haywood asked some of the questions that I had, but the one thing that I really want to say too is kind of along the lines of what Mr. Pizano said, like the strides that you've made on attendance are by far and away like blow out of the water, the national turnaround. You know, like you've just done such a good job paying attention to the initiatives and really honing in on, you know, what is important to students and how to really get them to where they need to be. And so I really want to commend you for all the hard work you've done there.
Thanks for saying that. That means a lot. I can, and I know, I know, if it means a lot to me, it probably means even more to him and, and sometimes...
I mean, I was, I was blown away.
Thank you. Sometimes we feel like we're not, we're not getting it, you know? I, I, and I don't, I just mean that because it's a ten, it's a, it's a hard one. It's just very difficult. And, and for, for kids that struggle to come to school, it's, it's hard, like, and, and you have to be very creative to try to meet them.
Well, your numbers are like half the national...
Well, then, well, thanks. I mean, we do pay attention to the numbers, but I don't hear that, we don't hear that that often. So thank you.
We have a great community, we, you know, whether it be the, the healthcare providers or the mental health providers or the community partners, we really have a lot of people, good people, trying to do different things to support our families.
Thank you.
Yeah, but by coincidence, five of the seven committee members were on the Strategic Planning Committee flat, two here and there. So, and, you know, there aren't a bunch of strategic directors. It was like, you know, four or five and, you know, felt very strongly that attendance needed to be on that list. So like I said, it's...
Thank you. And we'll, we'll try to come up with, you know, I appreciate Ben is creative and comes up with different ways to do it and to message it and to, so it's, it's, you know, it's refreshing. So thank you so much. Appreciate that.
Ms. Bryant?
Yeah, I have more of a statement. Each of the presentations that the school does, you hear about the individual work. And I just really appreciated hearing, you know, all of the support that you're giving our, our district. I'm really looking at the work that you're doing as empowering, not only, you know, those individual schools and the staff, but our students, our families and our community, really thinking of it as a net, right? Like you're, you're catching people when you fall, you're using that net to catch resources and reel it in. So, you know, thank you so much for just elevating all of the work across the district versus just that individual picture we usually see.
Thank you for saying that. I'm grateful to be in Plymouth and, and, like, I, I, I still love what I do and I'm grateful for that, so thanks, yeah.
Ms. Smart adults?
Yeah, thank you. Is there anything that surprised you? You said you've been doing it for five years. I mean, if you look over that course of time, is there anything that jumped out at you and you said, hey, look, you know, for the next five years, I could learn from that?
That's, that's a great question. I, I think the best way to describe, I, I think a good answer to that is that the programs, like Dr. Halpin said, the programs that we have, we have a lot of good programs in Plymouth to support a lot of different needs. The face-to-face community partnerships that we have, I do a lot of home visits and I think it would go a long way for everybody in the community, you know, for, for, you know, to, to keep pushing that connection between the home and the school so that folks understand each other, where they're coming from. I get to see up close sometimes what maybe schools don't get to see up close. It can be heartbreaking, but it can also be very inspiring. And I think that when that human connection is there, people, you know, like, like everybody's here for the right reasons in school and public education. But I think when, when, when we can bring that realization, right, you know, face-to-face, I think the more that we can do that, the more I can do that and help, you know, get families in, but also get us, you know, get us to them. You know, one of the things, I, I just put it to you this way, through that Algonquin Summit, I'm, I'm really hopeful that we can showcase there on, you know, where they're at, all the amazing things that we do in the schools so that, you know, one of the major themes that kept coming up was it, so that students and families there believe that the message and the programs that we have is for them as well, you know? And it, and that they imagine all the possibilities that we want for all our kids. So I think it's getting out into that community more, the more I can do that, the better I feel about all the work that we're doing.
Yeah, and I, I think that helps you identify anything that's at risk too at an early timeline, because I think that connection beyond the walls of the school, I mean, you need the parental support too. But I think that's, that's critical and I applaud you for, it's not the easiest thing, you know, getting involved and seeing things up close, but I, I think that's great.
Thank you, yeah.
Any other questions? Me? I only had one, one question, Doug, as my fellow members covered everything. It's a question I'd rather not have to ask, but given the way things are been the last three and a half months, have you, have we seen any significant impact from, you know, the...
It's a great question and I, and I went faster than numbers. I, I recognize that.
Yeah, you can already guess, guess what I'm asking, because obviously I'm worried about, you know, people that are just scared to come to school or parents, things like that. So, yeah, what is the, what are you seeing on...
So we, very specifically, the, the, the number of, of withdrawals we've had in that is, is awash with the number of, of adds we've had. That's the, that's the simple answer to it. We've, we, we haven't seen the numbers change much at all. If anything, for, for, for our numbers, like we, the access test, we're, we're getting like we, the access test, we're getting our results back. So we're starting to see some kids move out of needing English language services. So I'm seeing some of the numbers, like I know it's at 420, it's probably more like closer to 400 now. Those kids are literally not receiving ESL services anymore because they've met the threshold that they need to get on the access test. But as far as the numbers of students that we've had in, in the, in our schools, it's, it's awash.
What about absenteeism? Is that, yeah, that's-
Oh, absenteeism, I'm sorry.
Yeah, well, no, no, your, your answer was good, because that is important. But yeah, I was really concerned about absent, the impact on absenteeism, because you've made such amazing strides that I worry that it could happen.
It hasn't changed a lot. That's the easiest way to put it.
Yeah, I would say that year over year, it remained, it's remained constant. So I think it was a faculty council that, that subject came up too. And so we kind of looked in, you know, we looked into it. Obviously, it's, it's, it's a subject that's on a lot of people's minds right now. And I was surprised to see, you know, maybe a little surprised to see that it was, we were right in line with previous years in terms of, no, in terms of, just in terms of trends at this time of year, that there was no, there was no dip in attendance.
You're not seeing a hit, yeah, in your, at least in the numbers that you see.
Correct.
Okay, that's promising. Ms. Bryant, do you have a comment?
No, just, just in regards to your mentioning where you were from year over year, however, are you looking from week over week perspective because of the fact that the, the trend is, is changing and knowing that the community is shifting based on, you know, moving in, moving out of Plymouth?
Yeah, especially the recent, you know, possibly the latest month or so.
Yeah, I think that's, we should, we monitor it pretty frequently, you know, so, you know, at least a few times a week, you know, I'm, I'm pulling that up on a day-to-day basis. There may be other things that I have to do, but that sort of, that, I call it the reverse bell curve, you know, some form of that curve exists when you look at each, each subgroup. So there's, there's going to be some subgroups that, where you may not have 95 or 97% attendance, but the, the bell curve, the shape is going to be the same, but there may be, there may be a two or three percent decrease in terms of the attendance rate, or a two or three percent increase in the chronic absenteeism rate. I have not noticed a significant, like a significant drop in any subgroup recently, but I can get that information.
No, I appreciate, I mean, yeah, I mean, keep an eye, I was keeping an eye on it, but I appreciate that, I mean, you would, if there was a massive impact, you'd have, it'd be obvious to you already, yeah, so.
We've been keeping our eye on it.
It is, it is constantly evolving though, based on, you know, just-
Yeah, it's, it's early days, but yeah, it's more, you know, just wondering. So I appreciate that it's not, you know, I think a significant dip. My, my, my next is just a, a comment that I got a kick out of seeing the massive spike in tardies in the 12th grade, having a son who I think tried to set a school record for tardies last year as a graduating senior. So I understand where, where the, where the spike comes from. So I did, that, I did note that spike.
That's awesome.
Believe me, I have a ninth grader now, so I, I often remind him that it's not a very good look if the supervisor attends, son is not in school on time every day.
Yeah, let me know how the conversation goes in like, you know, May of their senior year. All righty. Any other questions from the committee? You know, I'll echo Mr. Morgan's comments, Piala's presentation, lots of amazing data in there. So I really appreciate the work you guys are doing.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for having me.
Good to see you all.
Thanks.
All right. Next up, we have one of the school committee's core responsibilities, which is annual evaluation of the superintendent. So I'm gonna pull it up, and it is a long document, so I'm not gonna go through and read it word by word by any means. I will read some selected paragraphs, just to give the public an idea of what's in there. But overall, very positive. I'll start with the, the progress towards four key goals, just professional practice goal, student learning goal, and two district improvement goals. On the professional practice goal, Dr. Campbell was rated as meeting, you know, making the necessary progress. Student learning goal exceeded. I will say just timely that we just had that discussion on attendance, that massive increase in attendance was a big factor in that exceeds rating. District improvement goal one, which is, hold on, what is that one? It is family and, wait, hold on. I lose it. I forget them offhand, but first improvement goal is exceeds, and the second student improvement goal was meeting. In terms of assessment of overall standard, meeting of the standards for instructional later, instructional leadership, Dr. Campbell was rated exemplary, which is the highest rating. For the other three areas, management and operations, family and community engagement, and professional culture, Dr. Campbell's rated as proficient, just for the public's awareness. In this context, proficient is good, exemplary is kind of, is a pretty high bar. What you want is everyone to be a proficient, needs improvement, you know, we, we don't ever want to see. So thankfully, there's nothing negative on Dr. Campbell's evaluation. So I will read the first two paragraphs of the summit of value, overall evaluation. So Dr. Campbell's had a great year. The family, students, the families, students, and Plymouth community at large continue to feel fortunate to have Dr., should continue to feel fortunate to have Dr. Campbell at the helm of the district and its schools. He has worked hard to ensure every student receives a quality education, and he does an excellent job of keeping the community engaged and supportive of the district's needs and priorities. As superintendent, Dr. Campbell has demonstrated strong leadership and strategic vision in advancing key district priorities throughout the 2024-2025 school year. Across all four goals, there has been clear proactive engagement with a wide range of stakeholders, a commitment to data-informed decision-making, and a focus on transparency, equity, and operational efficiency. The district made exemplary progress in reducing chronic absenteeism through targeted interventions and community partnerships, while communication around financial matters reflected a comprehensive and multifaceted approach to building public trust. Efforts to restructure transportation systems were methodical and collaborative, setting the district on a clear path toward future cost savings without compromising service quality. The integration of DEIB practices, practices throughout the schools further illustrates a deep systemic commitment to fostering an inclusive environment that empowers all members of the community. Now I'll drop down to the last paragraph here, which is, overall, Dr. Campbell's work this past year reflects a high level of dedication, thoughtful planning, and meaningful progress in advancing the district's mission. So thank you, Dr. Campbell. And I'm gonna jump down to a couple of the individual goals. Scrolling down one sec. All right, so for instructional leadership, since that was rated exemplary, I will read the opening paragraph. Overall, the district is demonstrating efforts to make instructional changes at all grade levels to improve student outcomes and subsequently measure, compare, contrast, and modify best practices to meet the needs of the district's student population. It is clear that Dr. Campbell actively communicates and expects ongoing instructional improvements in all areas from the district's administration and staff. And then I'll read the first summary for management and operations. Overall, Dr. Campbell's efforts represent exemplary practice in promoting transparency and fostering public trust. There's ample evidence that Dr. Campbell and his administrators are carrying out a robust, a robust and thoughtful qualitative approach to transparency and engagement. Dr. Campbell is adept at gaining the community's support of the district's vision, mission, and future needs. He untiringly communicates with stakeholders at every level, resulting in support and advocacy from the, from the residents throughout Plymouth. This widespread support is clearly evidenced by the overwhelming support the district receives from the town meeting members during town meeting activities. Dr. Campbell's gentle approach, combined with hard data results in his school system, which continues to serve the district's students and families with state-of-the-art and best-practice-driven educational services. And scrolling down to family and community engagement, I'll read the first paragraph as well. While, or, Dr. Campbell places a high priority on engaging, on engaging families and the community in, in the educational process and understands the clear connection between family engagement and student success. The, this priority is also demonstrated clearly by Dr. Campbell's administrative team. In assessing the annual school improvement plans presented by the district's principals during the school year, the committee noted that maintaining or improving family involvement is consistently a top priority as the committee believes it should be. And then finally, on professional culture, Dr. Campbell has demonstrated a clear commitment to maintaining a positive culture in the district. This commitment begins with the, with the expectations of his senior administrators and cascades down to all of the district's faculty and staff. Dr. Campbell continues, Dr. Campbell keeps both the committee and the community appropriately informed of activity in the district and has earned the unwavering support of the committee. Thank you for a great year, Dr. Campbell.
Thank you. May I?
Please.
First of all, thank you very much for your, for your remarks. I greatly appreciate it. I, I absolutely love being in Plymouth. This is my community, and I feel honored to be here. The words you read are really reflective of, again, this leadership team, even the gentleman who's missing tonight, who's recovering from surgery, as well as the several people that came here and the people back at our building. So I thank you for that. I just really feel blessed to be here. And there's always room for improvement, and we recognize that. And I think we work really well together to try to foster the best environment for all of our families and students and, and our staff. And we're committed to that work. So just thank you very much. I really appreciate it.
Yeah, we appreciate it. I did, I forgot to mention, meaning the, while I read it and compiled it, it does represent the inputs of all of the members that were on the committee throughout the school year. So it did include input from Dr. Sorenson. So obviously, Mr. Smartzales was not a part of it, since it happened before the election, but it's definitely a collaborative thing. So I don't know if any other members have any comments or for Dr. Campbell, but all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I think next up is-
I'd like to approve that.
Oh, yes, thank, yes.
Make a motion to receive recommendation relative to the superintendent's annual performance incentive and take the necessary action.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
A second.
All right, Ms. Jackson, seconds? All right, thank you. Oh, it's making me log in again. All right, we have five in favor. Ms. Shaw is absent, and Mr. Smartzales is abstaining, obviously, since he was not part of it.
That's the right thing to do.
Yeah, no, appreciate that. All right, you approved?
Okay, I'm up again.
All right, now we'll move on, since I tried to skip.
All right, a few things, thank you. A few things to report tonight. So first off, tomorrow, really excited about this opportunity. We have a joint committee on education at the State House, testimony on our transportation bill. So tomorrow, the joint committee on education will be holding a hearing to solicit written and oral testimony on bills pertaining to a whole host of things, really, college and career readiness, rural schools, regional districts, and transportation. So I have the pleasure of testifying to support two bills that Representative Badger has filed. The first is H 513, an act required, requiring equitable funding for non-regional school districts with high transportation costs, and H 4011, an act eliminating predatory transportation pricing of school districts. Really look forward to that and providing follow-up on the 16th. I want to thank Ms. Jackson for her written testimony. Dr. Blaisdell will be participating remotely, and Mr. Pinto will also be there to testify, as well as remotely, I believe, Mr. Canty, from a town perspective. So we really look forward to that collective opportunity to, to really support and, and thank Ms. Badger for, for her efforts to, to move this forward. We mentioned transportation studies, so we have received one of our two transportation studies back from Alliance Education Associates. And actually, the, the gentleman who helped spearhead that will be coming on the 16th to do a formal presentation to the committee on that. We're still waiting for the final report from the Massachusetts Association from pupil transportation, but they'll just, I think will be complimentary to the work that was received from Alliance Education. So we hope to provide a report on that for the 16th. Actually, we will be doing that confirmed today. MSBA, our enrollment and education profile for HED school was submitted at the end of last week. It was due this week. So the MSB staff will review the information that we provided in that EPQ and the enrollment questionnaires and get back to us if there are any questions. But the team will go over that, and they will be looking at potential projections for us in terms of numbers. We'll have a meeting on August 29th to discuss any projections. Also, what's due on August 29th is our maintenance capital planning information, which we will submit online. So look forward to that milestone. Preschool, we had a great presentation, I think, from Ms. Tobin this evening. We've had, speaking of our preschools, we had two site visits, which many of our members were part of. So on May 15th and the 27th, we had an opportunity to tour both the current preschool space at PCIS, as well as the proposed space at South Middle School. Excuse me. I think it was a good opportunity to see the current configuration, how the space has been adapted in recent years, particularly as well as some of the constraints that are, challenges that are posed there. And it was also a great opportunity, I think, to see firsthand South Middle School and to speak to those concerns. I want to thank Ms. Tobin, as well as our committee members, that took time to, to do that, to walk those early evenings and late afternoons. And I also want to thank our staff, Mary Wodzinski, Heidi King, Jen Ryan, and Christine Blanchard, who were a part of those tours as well. Christine was on the second day. So taking all that into consideration, we will present a, a refined presentation and recommendation on the 16th to consideration. So I just wanted to, with the committee, know that that will be forthcoming as well. And then just a couple logistic thing, oh, no, there's more actually. A couple logistic things, academic convocations. Just a reminder again, this Wednesday, if you're available, South High School, 7:00 PM has their academic convocation. North is Thursday at 6:30 PM. Both are in the Performing Arts Centers. And then graduation, let's hope that the weather is good for us. We'll start this Saturday, this Saturday, starting at North at 9:30, but we do have a breakfast at 8:30 in the cafeteria. All of your names have been submitted for back parking lot. So when you pull up to North High School, should you be attending, they, they will stop you, and your name will be on that list and get you in the, into the back parking for breakfast if you want to come early. We'll head over right afterwards to South High School. We'll have lunch, a nice lunch in culinary, and their ceremony begins at 1:00. And the last thing that I, that I want to highlight, which is a, a great thing that happened last week, and we announced through social media, very proud to announce that two of our educators received the 2025 Latino Educator Shine Awards, recognized at the State House, Mari Costa and Anne Hassett. This was presented by the Latinos for Education in partnership with Senator Adam Gomez. And then probably nominations were probably made by Representative Badger and Senator Dylan Fernandez. So for those who don't know Mari, I just think it's worth taking a moment to kind of speak to Mari. Mari is a bilingual family ed liaison for the Plymouth Public Schools, has been working with us for many years. She does an amazing work, not only in trans, her, her translation, but her communication and connections that she makes with families, for families in our schools. She's also been instrumental in establishing the district's English learner parent advisory council, really building up the voice of our families. So really proud of that. Mari has broken down so many barriers and made so many connections, and we're just blessed to have her. And again, Mrs. Hassett, for the last 12 years, has been an educator for the Plymouth schools, currently serving as a Title I teacher at Federal Furnace. And her commitment really to targeting reading interventions to support countless students has been, has been a tremendous benefit to us. So just want to congratulate both of those amazing educators for making a difference and for that recognition. And then I do have one more reminder, which I forgot. Ms. Libby Hurley will be coming, our media and communication specialist, will be coming to the next meeting around 6:45. So if you could be here at 6:45, she will be, new group picture, put it on our website. We'll take individual photos if you'd like them, also put them on our website. So just wanted to make you aware of that as well. That's all I have this evening.
Thank you. Any questions for Dr. Campbell? Nope, all right. We'll keep moving on. Next up is retirement. Mr. Chauvy.
Yes, good evening. I have two retirements to share with you. First is one of our nurse educators at Manomet Elementary School, Luanne Neams. She'll be retiring at the end of this school year after 10 years serving our district. And our next retiree is Patty Callahan Ryan. She was the assistant director of food services. She's served in other capacities, but that was her most recent, in 40 years.
Wow.
I'll say that again, 40 years.
How's Patty gonna get by with that?
End of June. She'll be retiring.
All right, Ms. Jackson?
That's amazing. We would like to thank Ms. Neams and Ms. Callahan Ryan for their combined 50 years of service to the district, and wish them best of luck in their retirement and their future endeavors. and wish them, uh, best of luck in their retirement and their future endeavors.
I feel like we need to get like counseling or something for Pat, though, if he's gonna survive without Patty. All right, uh, all right. So next up, uh, reports and proposals from committee members. Have any, uh, updates from the committee? Ms. Bryant?
I would like to just share, um, an experience at, uh, Nathaniel Morton last week. I know we usually hear a lot, uh, in regards to students missing out because of a COVID experience at some point. And so, um, the graduating fifth grade missed out on their Patriot show. That I guess has been, um, integral as part of moving on over there. So the students petitioned Ms. Chase and Ms. Sewell to be able to do a fifth grade show, which they did an amazing, amazing job. It included a skit, um, memories that were submitted by the students read out loud. And then, uh, two students read an excerpt from Oh, The Places You Will Go in both English and Portuguese, which was really, really nice in bringing together the experience, um, that they've shared over there. The other students, um, participated by doing set design, performing extras. They did a skit on crew values that somehow included a zombie, but it was very entertaining. And so I just wanted to thank the, the staff, um, as well as teachers Sue Martin, grade three, Rebecca Lyle, grade three, Courtney Manesian, art teacher, Amber Bates, the music long-term substitute, as well as Allison Etherington, a parent who really initiated the idea. And was involved from beginning to end, as well as Robbie Abruzzi, who's had cut Stony in and helped prepare the stage, set up the library and the balcony for the show. So just really wanted to shout everybody out for going beyond to really help build a sense of community, school spirit, and tap into individual talents. Definitely appreciated. So thank you.
Great, thanks. Jackson, anything?
Yes, uh, Ms. Bryant and I also went to the diversity committee. And, um, and we had a great update from Eagles for Equity and all the great work that they've been doing. And I feel like they're, they're off to a really good start there. And as a shout out to my own daughter, she received an award for babysitting for the entire year for free for one of the other mothers, just out of the kindness of her heart. So they prevented, presented her with an award for babysitting, which was really super cute. I didn't know that was gonna happen.
You didn't. It was awesome.
Great, thank you for that update.
And then, um, also, joint meeting, um, uh, Dr. Campbell, myself, and Dr. Blaisdell met with the town to just continue to, uh, foster our connections when it comes to budget and some of the other initiatives that we have been working on to be more cohesive. And as always, I feel like it went, it went really well. We talked about a number of, you know, issues around the district and around the town that would be combined. So really thankful for them to continue to support that.
Thank you for doing that. All right, anybody else over here? All right, thank you for that. All right, uh, Master Planning Committee, any updates from that, Mr. Morgan?
Um, yes, there was a, um, community forum at Plymouth South Middle School on May twenty-second. Unfortunately, I couldn't attend. It could have happened to be my wedding anniversary, but, um, so now everything's gone to the consultant. And, um, I'm sure we'll be having a meeting sometime in, later in June to, um, to see their draft. And so we're getting close, where we're gonna be preparing our report. So, uh, more to come.
Excellent. Um, and then Building Committee, I know doesn't meet until next Thursday, so we'll roll that to our meeting on the sixteenth. So back to Mr. Trophy for appointments, leaves of vacancies, and resignations.
Yes, uh, so this evening, I can share with you that we did receive and accept four resignations. Uh, we did approve two certificate appointments and one classified, and then we did have one parental leave and one medical leave approved.
Thank you for that. All right, do we have any unfinished business any members would like to discuss? Any new business we want to bring up for our future agendas? See nothing? All right, that takes us to our consent agenda. Looks like we have a number of minutes and then a batch of, uh, actually, uh, equipment disposals. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I guess, um, you know what, I could actually do it afterwards. There are just, um, just three, uh, just issues, just spelling issues.
Oh, on, on the, on the, uh, on the minutes, okay.
Minutes, yeah.
All right, do we have a second on the, uh, uh, motion? Ms. Bryant, seconds? All right. All right, that passes unanimously. And then, Ms. Haywood, are there ones that you wanted to make adjustments to?
Yeah, um, just on the seventeenth, seven-two, um, the spelling, or seven-one, I say, um, the spelling of the Secretary of Education. There's just an R missing on Tuttweiler. Um, on nine-two, um, there's a Y missing from my name. That's on March seventeenth. And then on the seventh, um, just on, I guess it's on five-two. Moving down, um, I mentioned, um, something about, oh, asking about the constant movement of the program and the possibility of PEC, and it just, it's a spelling, it's just growing. It's just, it doesn't, it's just G O W R, just missing an R. That's it.
All right, thank you for that. All right, if nothing else, we are at the end of our agenda. So I will adjourn us at eight fifty-four PM.